...a quorum present with Allen, and we are ready to begin our workshop session. The first item on the agenda is a public hearing for the, for, to receive comments on the adoption of the proposed mileage rate for fiscal year 2022, 2023. This is the first of three public hearings scheduled to receive public comments. So at this time, I will declare the public hearing open. If you wish to speak on this matter, you can come to the podium. Seeing no one approaching, at this time, I will declare the public hearing closed. Item number two is the Charles Phillips Park Wi-Fi and AI camera installation, and I believe that Mr. Hicks and Ms. Johnson are gonna give us some updates in regards to that. So, good evening to the two of you.
Good evening, Mayor Council. We sent you guys the information on putting up pilot, and again, I want to stress, this is only a pilot for Wi-Fi in the park at Charles Phillips Park. We gave you all of the information, all the logistics, and it's only gonna cost us $2,500 for this pilot. If we like it, we bring the contract back for you guys to look at it and sign it, but again, this is only a pilot.
So, how long is the pilot?
Wait, wait, Councilman Clay, hold on one moment. Let the record flag, Councilman Gays, join us, and so, questions, we'll start with you, go right ahead.
So, you answered all my other questions, but how long is the pilot?
Thirty days.
Thirty days?
Yes.
And then after that, so are we, are we paying, there is a charge for this, and we're paying the money for the pilot? Or what if at the end of the pilot, we say, oh, no, we don't want to do this?
Right.
Do we get that money back or not?
No, we only paying $2,500 for them to put up the equipment for us.
Okay.
They're putting up four cameras and three Wi-Fi devices.
Right.
Trey, if you don't mind, let me sit right here. So, we're just paying for them to install the equipment, and if we don't like it after thirty days, we don't owe anything. We sent the contract to Winston, he sent back his concern. We had an hour-long conversation with them today. They're gonna take out some things in that contract that are not relevant to us. For an example, the install and uninstall fee. We're not paying them to install it, they ain't gonna pay them to uninstall it. They're gonna take that out, the actual permits.
So, all we're paying is this, we got a thirty-day pilot out of it, that sounds okay?
Yes.
So, the one thing I asked you about, and you said we could do it, was we want to be able to merge these cameras in with all the other surveillance cameras that we already have.
Yes.
And we want, because Mayor and Council have access to all the, all the surveillance cameras around the city. So, we also want to be able to control those cameras, because they're PTZ cameras. We want to be able to move them around, zoom in, zoom out, what have you, and, and it would be nice if the controls for those cameras behaved exactly the same way as the controls at Badgett Field, or the park, or wherever.
Right.
All the other cameras. And, and I got the impression that they will, is that correct?
Yeah, so, so two schools of thought here. Your, your first question was, give Mayor Council access to all of the cameras that we currently have, the CCTV cameras. The second school of thought is, can we federate these cameras into our Genetek system? Where the answer is yes, we can. We're currently doing it with Flock right now. We've got five cameras that we put in the Flock dashboard, and it's working.
So, how do I see those cameras?
Then, we've gotta give you access to that dashboard.
Okay, but Mayor Council has access to all the, all the cameras?
Not, not, not the five Flock cameras.
Not the five Flock.
Right.
But, we, we, if we have access to the other ones, I don't understand why we wouldn't have access to the Flock.
Well, I mean, it's the first request.
And if, and if, and if we have access to those, then we would access these.
Right, and so, as a pilot, if we want to integrate our cameras into Epic's dashboard, or we want to integrate Epic's cameras into our dashboard, it's just a matter of using that protocol. But let's say, for an example, because those four cameras, we want to use their dashboard, then they will give us access, username and password, to go in, use those cameras, look at those cameras, PTZ, move them, A, B, C, or D, whatever we want.
Right, but all, all I'm saying is, as part of the pilot, because it is a pilot, I think we can, need to demonstrate that that works.
Okay, so, I did not make integration part of the pilot, but we can. Trey.
I, I, I don't know, guys, I, I would think that we would want that.
Because, because what we're planning on doing, Madam Mayor, is giving you access to their dashboard, so you can look at the cameras in Charles Phillips. Okay, I did not go further in to say, we're gonna integrate them into our Genetek system right now. We're just gonna stand up the dashboard and give you access to it.
Here, here's the thing, we have had other technology that we brought in, that we thought would integrate, and it didn't. And it didn't integrate well, I'm thinking about, and this isn't your bailiwick, this was with the water meters and the electric meters, and we had all sorts of problems with that. We had three years of problems with that. And we finally got it fixed. And if we're gonna do a pilot, and this sounds like a great system, but I, I wouldn't want to say, hey, this is a great system, and then we buy into it, and then we find out that we can't integrate, and, and, because it's not just Mayor and Council, I mean, this is intended for the Police Department to be able to integrate in and see it and so forth. And it'd be nice to have a standard interface, so that everybody doesn't have to relearn it.
Well, I think...
That's all, that's all I had.
Okay, Councilman Carden?
Yeah, I would think that would be part of, well, that would certainly be part of me making the decision on, on this particular system, whether or not we can integrate it. So, so we need to know that first. So, worst-case scenario, we're out $2,500 bucks, is that what you're telling me?
If, if, if Michelle get the analytics back, the analytics are not what we want, the air quality analytics is not what we want, the license plate readers are not, we're not getting the data we want, Michelle can say, Miss Six, this is not working.
Okay.
So, $2,500 is all we lose.
And originally, we were only looking at Wi-Fi in the parks. That was what I would like to provide for our participants and, and people walking through the parks. So, Wi-Fi was what we were originally looking for. They are offering other support, you know, the, the license plate, the air quality, the noise. So, I thought, well, let's just, let's...
That, that's incredible.
Try it and see, and if it's, you know, if that's not what we want, then we can look at just the Wi-Fi. So, it's just an opportunity to get some different, I know, Councilman Gay was, you know, with air quality, and, and we got sound with the, the planes over there. I just think it's some good information that could be helpful for us, for, for the future and for our citizens in there.
I, I think it's a wonderful package.
Yeah, this is, you know, I, I think, a couple of other questions. So, so, we tested out for the thirty days. If it goes well, can the trial period last longer than thirty days, or is it thirty days only, and we have to decide what we're gonna do on the thirty-first day?
Well, we talked on thirty days, Trey, can the trial period last a little longer? If that's the Mayor Council's...
We, we extend it if it's going well, and there's additional things.
Why don't you come up?
I'm sorry.
And sir, before, can, can you introduce yourself before you start speaking?
Mayor Council, this is Trey King from Epic CIO.
All right. Sorry, so, I'm happy to go beyond the, the thirty days. What we want to do is make sure that the integrity of the pilot is actually intact. And so, if there's a reason for us, such as the integration that we need to demonstrate, or such as there's another piece that you want to look at to make sure that it does exactly what we think it wants to do, or that you want to accomplish in it, we're happy to extend that further. If we're in the middle of a contract back and forth, or redline back and forth, we're happy to integrate it further, or extend it further. So, we want to be reasonable in, in what the ask is, we just want to make sure that we maintain the integrity of, of a pilot in its truest form.
Okay, that's good to know, because as we're going through the holidays here, this is kind of a, I guess, more of a cooling-off period for the parks themselves. So, we may need a little longer to see what we got in terms of the patronage. As it gets cooler, there're gonna be less people there, so it may take longer to see, get a fully realistic assessment, you follow me, as opposed to it being in June.
Yeah, it, it, it's a fair point.
Yeah, okay, well, well, I wanna, I wanna make sure we have enough time to really, really assess it well, without being charged extra. And when you say this is a pilot, is this the first one you've done in a park period as a new company, or do you have other parks that have, that are proven, where you've had a track record in terms of?
Yeah, we're, we're actually doing this currently today in production in East Point, not the Wi-Fi part, but all the other integration parts, so occupancy counting, utilization, time of day, security of the actual park, and an after-hour scenario, things of that sort. So, we're doing this today, even locally, with a sister city. And so, this would be just an extension of what we're already delivering in a production environment. The only piece that we're adding to your particular park would be just the public Wi-Fi piece, and it's all cohesive in the same exact system itself.
All right. How far along is East Point in terms of the implementation of?
They're, they're fully implemented, and they are, actually, we're about to roll out additional intersections that we're doing with them as well, for things like traffic monitoring and incident management, and things of that sort, so. But the, the parks, they're actually coming up on a meeting to talk about expansion into one park that we've done today already for them.
And Michelle, you can guess what I'm gonna ask next, if you're talking to the East Point Rec Department, and to get their honest opinion on what they got so far.
Absolutely, we can do that, absolutely. My concern that I've had with Phillips Park, I, I personally have issues out there with Wi-Fi and phone, and that's one of the reasons for the thirty days, is to make sure we can find something that works out there for the Wi-Fi. I know all these add-ins are something great, but I want that Wi-Fi out there for people that, that they can use, that are at the soccer, or out there doing, you know, walking and listening and, and enjoying, you know, the parks with the Wi-Fi.
Okay, so, we're gonna, you're gonna find out from East Point, how quality of service from them?
We, we tried to reach out to them prior to, we were gonna meet with them.
I talked to Maurice, so he's gonna be sharing that data with me.
Okay, and parks and rec, Michelle, as well, because, you know, that's the other side of it, you know? Technically, it might be great, but you want to get a feel from, you know, the park side too, you know, to get a feel for it. Not that you don't have a feel for that, but I want to get both sides of it. The reason why I'm so concerned about this is because, you know, this is the type of front-facing amenities that customers, and our customers, by the way, are our residents, you know, expect to see and expect to get, especially in a city with the last name Park. So, the last question I have, Phillips Park is our most frequented park, as I was told, so, once people know Wi-Fi is here, it's gonna get pretty popular. So, there's also the other ramification of additional wear and tear. And as you know, that playground equipment there is long overdue for an overhaul, so everybody finds out there's Wi-Fi there, there are a lot of folks in our community that don't have Wi-Fi at home, so this park may become a little more frequented than it is now, so, you know, we gotta, gotta keep that in mind as well. But again, it's a good thing, it's a good service, and if we've got it, you know, the folks that may have gone to the East Point Park up the street, you know, may be coming down here, or the South Fulton Park, or whatever, you know, and then maybe they've considered moving into College Park, but I mean, so that could be a good thing. So, just, just think about those, and I, I know, I know we're replacing equipment at, at Barrett, is that right? Is, is, is...
So, I originally put in for all the parks, for all the playgrounds, for the last CDBG, and was giving a certain amount of money, so based on the size of the park is why Barrett was...
We've done Brady already.
Well, Brady was a new park, yes.
Yeah, Brady was a brand-new.
So, my, my goal is to hit all the parks.
And that, that's in this budget, CDBG?
Well, I, I actually had put in, you know, four park upkeep, but it's, we're looking between $300,000 and $500,000 to probably, because it's two, two playgrounds at Phillips, it's not one, it's a nice two-some.
So, we budgeted for that this year, or, or we're not?
No, no, because I, I had, I had Wi-Fi for all the parks to be in there, but we brought it down to one.
Okay.
So, I always think of the parks as a whole, and, and when it's not, you know, one park over the other, I always want to, if we're gonna do one, I would like to do for all of them.
Well, and I'm, and with this, I mean, it's a pilot, but I'm gonna say, you, you need to, I want to do it for all of them, I want to see that in all of them, if, if it's working well.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
And, you know, I don't mind being the guinea pig, since the park's in my area, but yeah, I mean, okay, that sounds good, yeah.
Councilman Allen?
I just had a couple of questions. The thirty-day was, was one of my concerns, that starts after everything is already in place and working and, and so forth. At East Point, do they use the PTZ cameras as well? What, what cameras do they?
Yeah, they, they, they use a mix, and so, some are PTZ, and just for anybody that, just for clarity, PTZ is pan-tilt-zoom, is all that means, so. And so, they, they do a mix, so typically, there's, it's a, it's a one, or it's a two per five-set ratio, and all that really means is, is out of five cameras that they may deploy, typically, two are PTZ, and the rest of them are fixed based on something that's, that they want a constant view of, over a longer period of time.
And it's set up where it can use either the, the, the bullet camera, or the, you know, the PTZ, we could switch those, say, we started to switch them off for some reason?
You, you can.
We could switch those out, okay.
Yep, the, the design is, is flexible, and, well, I mean by that is, if you wanted to do all PTZ cameras, we can do that, if you wanted to do all fixed bullet, you could certainly do that. If you wanted a mix, we're happy to do that as well. It's, it's really up to you on what that outcome is for what you want out of the system, and we'll tune it to what you actually want. There's no reason to overbuy or overdo anything like that, it's just, let, let's get down to what you want out of it, and that's what we'll deliver. And then if there's something additional that you wanted a later date, then we can look at accommodating that. So, the system is collapsible or expandable, based on what your actual need is for the outcome.
Okay, now, the only other thing is, is, Mr. Hicks, please let us know when it is up and running?
Yes.
So, we can go to the parks, you know, in our wards, and, and test out the Wi-Fi and so forth. But you said East Point does not use the Wi-Fi?
No, today, East Point's not doing public Wi-Fi.
Okay.
At the parks that they have it integrated into, so Sykes Park would, would be one in particular that they've guided at, and they're mainly doing more site security, occupancy counting, and where are people going, and what are they doing, so they know how to either add on to or change out some of the equipment or facilities that they have available for the public.
Please let us know, so we can go over there. I know Councilman Clay will be over there checking everything.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I will.
But let us know, so we can take...
And also, keep in mind, we're measuring air quality and sound, not just Wi-Fi.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're doing a plethora of services that a lot of municipalities still don't have, so we'll be on the...
And does the report do it on a daily basis, or how does the report on the air quality and everything else, how does that come out?
So, the, the, the sensors can report back in more of a real-time scenario, and so, when the reporting comes out, it'll come out where you can look at it over the last hour, over the last thirty minutes, you can look at it over the last thirty days, over the, so, you can define the time in the actual reporting itself. And then, of course, there's an alerting capability as well, where if it reaches a certain threshold, and there's cause for concern, and that's, you know, it's definable by what you, the parameters that you would set, but then that alert could be generated, can be sent off, so that you know what triggered the alert, what to look at related to that, and then, then you, instead of waiting for a report, you've got an immediate action to, to take place, or to go and look at, see what's going.
Okay, that's all I had.
Councilman Gay?
Well, thank you for your consideration. I just had a couple of quick questions. Without being too technical, can you talk a little bit more about how you measure air quality?
Sure, so, there are air quality sensors that, that we've integrated into our system. For, for brand-name reference, they're purple, or they're branded purple air quality sensors, you could actually look them up. But for the air quality itself, there's two things that we're actually measuring, on top of your typical, like, temperature and humidity and things like that. Built into these sensors are your regular air quality index, which is used by every weather reputable company out there, so the Weather Channel, your typical weatherman, will all use their's air quality index scores that are associated with those sensors. The other thing that it'll measure is the, the size of the particles in the actual air. And so, the particles that are in the air go on a scale from one to two and a half to up to ten, and the bigger the particle in the air, the more pollution that you've got associated with something that's going on. So, think of a fire that's happening, the amount of carbon that's generated in the air means that the particles get bigger, and so, it would trigger off an alert, because your air quality index will follow that particle increase, and so, that's how we're actually measuring the, the air quality, from that perspective.
And could you elaborate on how you measure sound?
Sure, so, sound is just measured on a dB level, or a decibel level, and so, the average decibel level that, just from human ears, is somewhere between forty-five for indoors at a decibel level, and then in schools and malls, it goes up to, from fifty-five all the way up to, a typical one would be a seventy is normal range, without you having degraded hearing loss. The sensors themselves, out of the box, register at an eighty-nine decibel level, which is kind of like your typical lawnmower, is, is what that decibel level is. The good thing about our sensors is, is we can tune them to whatever you want from a triggered level. So, if you want that triggered level to be lower than that, that out-of-the-box that it comes with, then certainly, we can trigger that down, so that not only does it report, but it also alerts if there's a louder noise associated with, than that lawnmower-type sound, from a, from a immediate sense. Of course, everything flows back into the backend reporting as well, so you'll be able to see that on whatever schedule you'd like, whether that be, you know, a half hour, an hour, a day, thirty days, however you want to look at that.
Okay, and the third question is, with the Wi-Fi, can you access Wi-Fi if you were inside of a car or a house?
Um, can I ask, ask, maybe ask the question just so I...
The Wi-Fi that you're installing at our parks, can the user access the Wi-Fi if they're in their car?
If they're in their car, so if they're in their car in the parking lot, or stationary, then yes, that cone, for the way we've designed the system, they would be able to pick it up inside their car. If they leave the park and go, let's just say, across the street into that shopping center that's there, they would, it would be out of range, and they wouldn't be able to get it there. So, we've pointed everything inward inside of the park, because that's what we were trying to serve.
And is this just for municipalities, or you offering this to, like, developments?
Um, we can do it for development, we have not done that to date, so, all of the public Wi-Fi that we have done today has been municipality or public, public-oriented. We have not done anything in the private sector to date. Thank you. Sure.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I, I had, I had one. The sound level, that park is almost right under the flight path, so you could probably expect eighty to eighty-five dB potentially there, depending on the aircraft. I haven't actually measured it at the park, but I've measured elsewhere, so there's a good chance that it could be at that level. So, I would think you would want the range, because I think we would want to know what the impact on the park is of the planes going over there.
Right, and, and we would be able to measure not only when that went off, because we can drop what, what it comes in out of the box. So, we could take the registration on alert, or registration on the reporting down to seventy, if you wanted to.
To what?
So, that, we could take it down to, it registers any noise over seventy dB, so that you would know when you see a spike in that, or you would get an alert associated with when one of those aircraft flew over, and it registered that eighty-five dB.
Yeah, well, that, that, you're, what you're gonna find is, that during the day, at various times, there, there are five or six rush hours during the day, so you're just gonna have one plane after another for maybe twenty minutes of flying over, so you'd be getting a whole bunch of alerts. The interesting thing about that is that you will, that will correlate with data that's available on the web for planes going over, if, if for some reason, we ever wanted to keep track of that. But, but anyhow, you ought to be able to register up to, say, eighty-five dB, and I'm not sure what we do with the data at this point, but you should expect that.
Noted, and, and we'll make sure that we can, again, we'll tune that dB to where you want it, so that it will register off, or it will log every, every louder noise that's associated with it.
The other thing will be good about that is, with the recording of the, up to 2.5 microns of particle in the air, you're going to be able, really, to comment on emission issues from the aircraft.
Correct.
That, that's the kind of emissions that we're going to be getting there, and depending on how the wind blows, you will get, you're gonna get some interesting registration there. That'd be good, that'd be good data for us to take to the, to the airport.
And, and it will correlate directly with the AQI score as well, so the air quality index score is typically, will follow exactly that same pattern as well, is what we've seen over time with other municipalities.
And it will pick up the fuel, right?
I'm sorry, say again.
Fuel from the airplanes, it'll pick up that discharge?
It'll, it'll pick up, if it filters down through the, through the atmosphere, down to that, that level, then it will absolutely pick it up.
Yeah, that'd be very good to see.
Well, it's good to know that, you know, it's got those type of threshold settings on it, where we can, we can look at stuff. My question was in regards to, along the lines of ambroses, but aircraft overflights, aircraft overflights, when you're testing this, even to this day, some of us that have Wi-Fi in our homes, when an aircraft flies over, the screen will freeze sometimes and pixelate, and if we're providing Wi-Fi service, it doesn't do us any good if every time a plane flies over, everybody's screens freeze and they gotta reload. So, I want to make sure that that's a part of the type of testing that, that, that we have, because, again, with some of the Wi-Fi service in the homes, we get that in certain areas. So, this can, like, tell you, you know, I, I know the temperature, you know, you go on the Weather Channel, and, you know, you get College Park's temperature, and, you know, I don't know where that comes from exactly, I'm assuming it comes from the barometers at the airport, I would imagine, but that may not necessarily be what the temperature is in the park, you know, there's a lot more greenery there, and it may be a little cooler in the park, for instance. So, so theoretically speaking, could we put on our television station every morning, the temperature at the four parks is this, or the humidity is that, you know, you know, that type of detailed information?
You, you would have it available to publish however you would like to, so...
Again, that's a good amenity. Last question, insurance, if, if one of these poles is damaged, is that on you during the trial basis, and if we take on the entire service, is that insurance coverage in, in the deal, or do we have to cover ourselves with your equipment?
It's a fair question. So, during the actual trial itself, the equipment belongs to us, so if it's damaged, it's, it's us. What we've proposed in a longer-term arrangement is more of an as-a-service model, and in that as-a-service model, we would, we would still own and maintain the equipment itself, but also, in that insurance type of scenario, it's all included. So, in other words, if a camera goes out, if, if a access point goes out, if the back hall somewhere goes out, it's on us to not only resolve it, but also replace that equipment as well, at no charge to, to the, the city. So, that is, that is the as-a-service model. If, you know, if you wanted to do something where you bought the equipment outright, then at that point, that would be more the city's responsibility to replace the equipment, because it was purchased outright. So, there's a couple of different ways that you can do it. Once we get past the pilot, then certainly, we can lay all of that out, and you can decide what's best for, for the city.
Sound, last question, how soon you get the pilot up and going, I mean, are we talking a couple of weeks here, or a couple of months?
Um, well, we, we need to just sign the agreement on the actual, that we're gonna do the pilot together, and then after that, the gear is actually in our build facility at headquarters in Fort Mill, South Carolina. We'll have that shipped down, and, and then it's just us scheduling the install. It just depends on availability from the install crew at that particular point, but the equipment's available today.
So, could, could it be November, or, I mean...
It, it could potentially be at the end of this month, just depending on when we actually got the, got the pilot documents on.
Sounds good.
Councilman Gay, I mean, Councilman Carden, I'm sorry, we did, what was my concern, was your concern with the Wi-Fi working, so Trey and them did come down, and... So Trey and them did come down and actually do some tests to find out which would be the best service out there, so that was my concern also with that.
Yeah, because when someone's streaming video, that's going to be the real test.
You know, I, I would like to know when, when the equipment gets up, because I would like to come out and make some measurements myself.
Sure, yeah, and to the point, we, we did go out and do testing, we actually did it on all three carriers. We also did it where we could lock into certain bands of actual cell coverage. So the cell co, the, the carriers have different bands of cell signal, and so if we lock on to a certain band, then we have a better consistency, and it doesn't fluctuate, which is what you experience when the planes fly over.
Do you have 5G, all three 5G bands out there?
Uh, we, we can operate on 5G, so in, in the router itself, it will support it, but 5G would be more for the back hall side, it wouldn't be for the front end of the Wi-Fi connection.
Right, that, that's exactly what I'm thinking, for the back hall, not, not.
Right.
Not the Wi-Fi.
Well, if, if, if Ambrose is coming out to test it with you, you better make sure it's working right.
We, we, we went out and tested all three carriers on a consistent basis, and we actually went back out and did it again after the fact, so.
Who are you using for the back hall?
I'm sorry.
Who, what carrier are you using?
We, we, we initially feel like T-Mobile's going to be the better carrier for us to use. When we went out and tested in both instances, we got above two-hundred megabytes on the download, and right around eighty on the upload, so we felt pretty good about that.
And that's with whom, Verizon?
T-Mobile.
T-Mobile, okay, I didn't hear that.
It was. Verizon that we tested, we got, we, we got right about thirty-six meg on the download, and we got around ten on the upload, it was not consistent at all. AT&amp;T was about in the middle, but on the lower end of that middle, and so we felt like T-Mobile at a more consistent level would be able to provide a better experience.
Okay, you're, you're, you're going to want to put restrictions on what sites can be accessed from there, because you don't want people downloading Netflix movies and streaming Netflix and what have you.
Right.
Or you're going to eat up all your bandwidth right away.
And so we, we've got the ability to whitelist, or, or just access control directly off of where you want people to go, and so that's, because we're using a Marocque router, it gives that ability for not only access control, but also site restriction, related to what you're going to want people to either stay away from, or have access to.
Yeah, well, there's some things you don't want children to be able to access, or, or even.
Well, your, your.
Adults.
Typical bad stuff, right? And, and it's, it's things that you, you really wouldn't want, like, I've got a seven-year-old and a two-year-old, so just your, your basic things, I wouldn't want them going to as well.
Well, what, what I, I don't want is, kids going to the park to watch some things that they wouldn't be allowed to watch at home.
Right.
Any other questions? It sounds like there's consensus from the body to move ahead on this, this is a twenty-four, twenty-five-hundred-dollar expenditure, so that would be under the purview of the city manager, so not much else for us to do on this. All right, so that.
Can I ask you a question?
Mr. Myers, yes, go right ahead.
What's the twelve-thousand, five, twenty-six on the cover sheet?
So that would be after the pilot, that would be the cost for the, the cameras for the lease for the, for the year.
For our year, right?
I just didn't understand that.
Yeah, so.
So we're just, we're just doing the, the, there.
I, yeah, just the pilot, all right.
Yeah, we're just doing the pilot, and then after that, we would come back and present whatever cost we would be looking at. It was just to give them an idea, looking for.
All right, well, thank you, I was just making sure it was, because it's both twelve and two-five, looked the same to me.
All right, that concludes our workshop, we'll see everybody at seven-thirty, thank you.